Speaking instead, so if you'll come on up, sir. And remind everybody to put your phones on silent or turn them off or airplane mode. And you have five minutes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much for having me here. My name is Ralph Hendricks and I serve on the, as board president of Homegirl Industry. It's a 501(c)(3) located in Clanton, started by Sally Higgins in 2022. Tonight, we're requesting some funding from the opioid settlement money. But before I begin telling you what we're going to do with the funding, I first wanted to tell you what we're not doing with it. As most of you are aware, the Homegirl Industries has had past designs to renovate the historic Hotel Wilson. At the present time, however, our board has chosen to step away from the Hotel Wilson project. So to be clear, none of the funding we are requesting from the commission tonight, if we get it, will be going toward any improvements regarding the Hotel Wilson. I just wanted to point that out. Now, in, two years ago, the Alabama Opioid and Addiction Council report to the governor, four counties were marked increases, have marked increases in drug overdoses. Jefferson County, Montgomery County, Elmore, and Chilton. Overdose-related ER, emergency room visits in Chilton County increased thirty percent from twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-three. Uh, overdose with emergency medical services incidents doubled from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three. Chilton is twenty-third out of sixty-seven counties for the number of rela-, of ER visits. In twenty fourteen, we had about five people per thousand in Chilton County that were in substance abuse treatment. And, um, last year, we only had about two per thousand in Chilton County. So, for these, for these reasons, um, I wanted to explain what we would like to do with this particular funding. Sober housing. It was started in nineteen seventy-five. It's proliferated across the United States. There's around two hundred and thirty-five of these houses throughout the country. And, uh, simply put, uh, it's a, it's residential for recovering addicts. This particular money will be for women over eighteen that are in recovery. The reason we have selected that is there's not a place in Chilton County for women for sober living. It's a simple concept. Basically, it is a place to stay. There are two basic rules. You stay sober and you work. You're employed. Average stay is somewhere between six months and eight months. We're only asking for, um, a small demonstration project, somewhere around four women. One of those would have at least a year of recovery to be sort of a house manager. It would be in Clanton. Clanton has some, um, some excellent resources. We have a hospital here. Uh, we have, sober living involves a lot of social, um, and civic services. AA, um, we have the, uh, oldest AA group in, uh, in the state of Alabama. Just, just, uh, celebrated their seventy-fifth anniversary. We have a mental health center here. So, basically, what this sober living house would do, how much longer do I have?
One minute.
One minute, okay. Uh, thanks for keeping time. So, um, people would stay there. We would get them referred to an enormous amount of services, mental health services, substance abuse services, do urinalysis, and, um, so, basically, the budget required, we're asking for seventy-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. That will involve rent for a two-bedroom house, utilities, of course, transportation, urinalysis at fifteen to twenty-five dollars per urine. Accounting, bookkeeping, insurance, staff. And that's all I've got.
Okay.
I just wish you would take this into account.
Well, we have a, uh, resolution that any funding comes through our office. We have a form that is required to be filled out, anybody. It doesn't matter. Any department within the commission has to fill out this form and request a budget amount from us. So you'd, you need to go back to that process. And now, if anybody's got any questions, but that would be the process to come back for funding and put your amount down. It's got several things on there that we require from anybody.
Yes, sir.
To do this.
I see. And, uh, fill that out and then I come back?
Uh, yes, you can fill it out and come back.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
I've got one question for him. What neighborhood, where, you said it wasn't going to be at this place over here, so where is it going to be?
We don't know. Anyplace we can rent, uh, a two-bedroom house. And these women are not going to be, they're going to be sober when they go in. They'll be detoxed or, uh, he will have them in jail for a while, so they're not going to be on drugs when they go in. And it's, uh, so it won't be, it'll be non-medical.
Okay. Are you familiar with the Wellhouse in Odenville?
Wellhouse, what?
That's in Odenville.
Uh, I've heard the name, um.
Ladies back there are.
Oh, uh.
Is this similar to the Wellhouse? And the reason I'm saying, there's money available there.
Yes, sir.
Carolyn Potter is the head of that in Wellhouse out there.
I will contact her also, yes.
You can see me afterward. I have her number.
Well, thank you, sir.
And, uh, that, that's a sixty-five acre complex out there. And if I'm not mistaken, I know there's one, two, three houses there, which stage these girls at a certain level. They come there, they, they stay two weeks or six weeks, and then they can move to another house.
Right.
There is, uh, an apartment building that's there, the chapel's there. We now have a barn out there, which is not a barn. It's used for pottery. It's used for exercise. It's used for devotion. But I think it sounds like you're in line with something that.
That's right.
That's already existing, that's already in play, that has already crossed a lot of the Ts and dotted a lot of the Is.
Yes, sir.
And Carolyn will help you on there.
I, I would, I would love to meet her and, and go out there and look at the place. I worked for a public psychiatry for thirty-eight years at a UAB in community corrections. I was program manager there. So I'm used to, even if we can't get somebody in our house, we would refer them to someplace like that.
Well, I don't know if they got an office for you back there, but they do have a doctor's office and a nurse's office back there, which they come on site.
I got you.
Mr. Hendricks.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, we are underserved. I am pro-supporting anything in Chilton County because I had a mother from Maplesville area that, uh, had a, um, substance abuse problem and really wanted to recovery help. And she went through all the jails, the court systems, and had to go all the way to Mississippi to be housed for X amount of months. Unfortunately, she relapsed because the family couldn't get to her to do the visitations. And had she been closer, I felt she would have been more successful because she was homesick. And, um, this strikes many people in Chilton County. Uh, I would, you know, the board, you know, we, I would love to consider, and you do the resources, like Commissioner Williams said, get the form because there are monies allocated from the opioids that, you know, I'm very, very familiar with, that we can have, you know, resources. Because, uh, in speaking with, um, the DA a while back, there is a lot of support and second chances that we need to, and females unfortunately are underserved, um, a lot. So, yeah, I'm, I, you know, would be very interested in getting back, yeah, I thank you for your statistics that you have gathered. Those are very good for Chilton County because me being a nurse worked ER a lot. More in Beale County, I see the ODs coming in, uh, from drugs. So, yes, it's something, mental health and, uh, drug addiction, Chilton County, and for the record, is real.
Yes.
Whether we want to allocate those things or not, uh, so I'm in support. And I solicit a lot of community support. We need to get behind people that are advocating for this. And thank you, Commissioner Billingsley, because I would love to see that place in Odenville when I find where Odenville is. I think I passed through it somewhere. And, uh, um, I would like to, uh, see those facilities. So, thank you so much and you all for reaching out. And if we do have funding, we allocate funding for a lot of things. And guess what? I don't say too much on this board or probably, you got, well, I'll keep that. But what I will say is, I, I solicit the support from the Chilton County community to stand behind us, the board, and what the form you get, uh, for that as well as mental health. So thank you so much. Okay?
You're welcome, Commissioner. Thank you.
Uh, anyone else? All right. Thank you, sir. And you get that form filled out.
I'll get those forms very quickly. And thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Enoch is not here tonight. That brings us to the High Sheriff.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. How y'all tonight?
Good.
I'll be asking for a resolution tonight, or tonight, or tomorrow night. Be reclassifying Samuel Blackman, uh, from corrections officer, uh, to deputy sheriff. Uh, also be asking for a resolution that reclassifies Deputy Colin McDaniel. He's leaving us, uh, but wants to remain part-time. So he's going to drive heavy machinery to make some more money. So. And be asking for the commission, uh, for a resolution on extra-duty employment. And this will kind of help, uh, deputies get stretched more and more. And I think as of today, I'm thinking about five deputies short. So, you know, you get to the weekend with things going on and everything else, it, it shrinks it even more. Talked to the Ethics Commission about this. They said, as long as everything, you have a work agreement and everything else, everything's perfectly fine. Uh, so you have that in your packet, you know, it just, you know, money would be paid to the commission.
All we need to do is just sign off on it, basically. Okay.
I, I would like to ask you, extra-duty services, I don't want to sign off. Can you explain, elaborate without me reading that?
It, it, it could be anything like working a racetrack, uh, a wedding, something like that, where they feel like they need security.
Okay.
It saves us from having to, you know, we're going to get calls there one way or another, whether it be, you know, loud music, whatever the case may be. A fight, racetrack, whatever the case may be.
Okay.
We're going to have to send somebody out there, so it already makes it short answering calls and stuff like that. If they're already on scene, they're going to be deputy sheriff. They can still deal with it.
Oh, okay.
So. But, you know, like I said, talked to the Ethics Commission and they said they're perfectly fine with it because of work agreement. All the, all the necessary documents are there, uh, for y'all to review.
That's good.
Sheriff, this income, this extra income they'll earn will also help them with their retirement.
It will. It will go, go in, pay into their retirement or whatever the case may be. That's right.
Yeah.
It will. But hopefully it will, like I said, help us because, like I said, we've had one night shift that we were down to basically two deputies. So this has been the one that we're the shortest on. So when you rotate that out, that's, that's the weekend that they work. Them boys don't get much, they don't get much downtime at all, so.
Any extra pay we could help them get, I think it's help retention, huh?
Yep. I, I think it will. At least kind of help the ones on shift that they won't have to be going and photo with that, that part of it. They can, you know, the deputy who are there, they can deal with it.
Yep.
So.
Good idea.
All right. Any other comments?
All right. Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank y'all.
Okay, Commission Office, Ms. Sylvia.
Uh, tomorrow night, we'll, uh, close the, uh, board nominations for Central Alabama Wellness. Gina Watley has been nominated. Also, closing, uh, for Regional Planning Commission of Greater Birmingham, Sylvia Singleton has been nominated. And we'll be closing those and, um, moving, uh, moving forward. In your package, you had the twenty twenty-five back-to-school sales tax holiday, which is July eighteen to twenty, twenty twenty-five. We can choose to vote on that now. Uh, I think we've got until the first of June to actually get that passed. But, um, if you want to have any discussion about that, um, we can vote on that at any, any date between now and then.
I think just go ahead and put it on there for tomorrow night.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, in, I, I also handed out the, the fraud and related party transaction requests. I know you're aware that we are, uh, uh, being audited by the state examiners, which we are glad we are. But they asked that, uh, the commissioners fill these out and sign them. And, uh, if you will do that, I will take them, uh, to her tomorrow. We were asked about, uh, elevator doors for the new courthouse, uh, whether we wanted painted doors or stainless steel elevator doors. And, uh, um, when I asked about, uh, stainless steel seemed to be the, the choice. And if we do that, that's a forty-five hundred dollar increase, which is in the scheme of things, not a big deal. For, Mr. Childers, did you say for a thirty-year investment?
I, I hope, I hope this is going to serve us about sixty years.
Well, so forty-five hundred dollars is not, not a big deal in the scheme of things. But that would have to add to the courthouse budget.
Lot harder to deface a stainless steel door than it is a painted door, too.
That is correct. And you're not constantly having to touch up, which would probably cost you that within a few years.
Yep.
So.
All right.
And I believe that's all I have.
Okay. Donald Giles, our Parks Director.
I'll be asking for a resolution to, uh, transfer the temporary assistant park manager, Elizabeth Smith, to full-time park manager effective May the fourteenth.
Assistant Park Manager.
Assistant.
Assistant.
Yeah, Assistant Park Manager.
Okay.
She's temporary now, trying to move to full-time assistant.
Okay. Any questions?
You said, you said a park manager.
Oh, no, Assistant Manager.
All right.
And then the only other thing I got, I just want to say thank you to the Sheriff Department for all their help on the vehicle pursuit of the, and the Clanton Police Department because, uh, they did a great job.
Uh, he had, he had a request that we need to put in your budget a push bumper for that truck, too.
Push bumper and a camera on the dash, on the windshield would be great. And they ain't expensive, the cameras, and they guys' cameras.
Oh, it's a joke, but it wasn't a joke because he had a, we had a, uh, someone with warrants staying at our park. And he happened to find him and ended up in a pursuit and a spiking of the vehicle on I-65.
Not only he had warrants, I think he was doing criminal mischief to the parks as well.
Yeah, they done some criminal mischief to our bathhouses also.
Okay.
And had drug paraphernalia and stuff on the premises, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Okay, uh, Christina, Animal Control.
Hello, um, asking for a resolution to, currently we have temporary hires that have changed them to full-time. So Rosa Pierce, um, to a Kennel Tech Two, and then Vivian Abernathy and Wesley Pate. And Anna Brooks, um, both to Kennel Tech Ones. Um, and there is a change in the pay rate, which is listed on there.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right. Anybody got any questions about the hires? All right. Thank you, ma'am. Okay.
Yeah.
Heath Sexton, County Engineer. And I don't think, I may give you ten minutes tonight instead of five with this list.
Oh, it won't take long, but I appreciate your time. It's, it's an honor to be here, Commission. First, I'd like to start off by saying that, uh, we advertised for bids for the County Road Twenty-three Improvement Project. This project also received, um, Rebuild Alabama grant funds in the amount of three hundred fifty thousand dollars. This four-point-four mile road, uh, road improvement project will, uh, reconstruct the road and then place a, a wearing surface. We received four bids. At this time, I would, um, uh, at first, I would request that the, uh, commission accept all four bids. The bids from, uh, Dunn Construction in the amount of one million, nine hundred and two thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. The bid from Asphalt Contractors in the amount of one million, five hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. The bid from Wiregrass Construction, the amount of one million, six hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars and seventy-five cents. And the bid from Chilton Contractors for one million, five hundred and ninety-two thousand, seventeen dollars and forty-eight cents. All bids, uh, were correct, and they included all the required, um, uh, uh, bonds and information. Afterwards, I would, uh, uh, then also request the commission to approve the, uh, the low bid from, um, Asphalt Contractors in the amount of one million, five hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. I did speak with Asphalt Contractors, um, and, um, since they mostly do paving, they did tell me they will, they do not plan to, uh, they plan to subcontract the, uh, the full-depth reclamation work with cement. And, uh, the contractor they had mine was Chilton Contractors, so. Uh, but anyway, I, I.
He was the bid for Dunn. What'd you tell, what was Dunn's bid?
One point eight.
One million, nine hundred and two thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-five cents.
So there's one point five then, right? Asphalt Contractors, one point five?
One million, five hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars.
Do we, uh, we're asked for references? I don't recall seeing any asphalt contractors work.
They have a, uh, their main office is in Montgomery and they're, um, have another office in Plant in Selma. And, um, and they're, they're, they're a large contractor.
And what are they subbing out? What are they, what part of that are they subbing out?
The.
Full-depth reclamation.
Full-depth reclamation.
Tilling up the base.
Which is typical. A lot of times the contractors will have subcontractors for the striping, uh, for the construction signs.
I don't think it's but three in the state that does that full depth.
It's Chilton. It says Chilton put in a bid.
Yeah.
They put in a bid. They put in a bid, but they're going to use Chilton.
That's not uncommon.
Okay. What about the asphalt millings on there? Does that's used on a full depth?
There won't be any asphalt millings. They'll be milled into the ground as part of the, uh, reconstructing the base. Where they'll, uh, mill the, uh, the top eight inches of the roadway. And the, uh, the asphalt from the top will be milled in with the eight inches to, and the cement will be added as well. At a rate of about forty, forty pounds to the square yard. Which will, you know, create, uh, kind of like a, um, uh, a six-hundred PSI soil concrete mix. Give it a strong base. All right, next, um. We have, um, completed the base reconstruction for County Road Six Thirty-three, as well as put a seal on it. And I would like to request, uh, approval to advertise for bids to resurface, uh, County Road Six Thirty-three as well as County Road Ninety-five and Seven Sixty-four, when we do the same type of work to them. And, uh, as well as, um, place a thermoplastic traffic stripe on County Road Twenty-three. The County Road Twenty-three project, um, just had a paint stripe, kind of like a temporary stripe. And when we, and I, and in this bid, I would like to include a, uh, the high-end stripe for Twenty-three.
Okay.
And of course, these projects are budgeted. No need to, uh, I had on here about, uh, modifying, uh, a budget, but no need to do that. So we'll take that out, if you don't mind. And, um, I would like to request to fill several positions with, uh, Mr. Connor Bice, Mr. Danny Floyd Wade, Mr. Lyle Neil Wilton, and Mr. Travis M. Finger. At the positions rate and effective date as shown on the attachments. And I'd also like to request approval for the reclassification of Kevin Burnett to the Road Foreman Equipment Operator Three, Truck Driver Four position, as shown on the attachment.
I know why it looked like you had some any things duplicated to hires.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I appreciate it. Hope I didn't take the whole ten minutes.
Yeah, I was waiting to keep this going. I was like, yeah.
I looked at that.
I got a quick question.
Which one was that?
This one that just says.
Worker.
Was there another, or was that just an error?
Didn't put the first name. He called out the Corey Connor Bice.
Connor Bice.
He didn't get that first part of that on there, what it looks like.
Last, last bullet point before the.
Yeah, but I think that's the first point. If you go back to the first page of his stuff, it looks like part of that was left off.
Under Kevin Burnett's.
No, under Connor Bice, but.
Yeah, I think it's supposed to be Connor Bice, and it just didn't get picked up.
Well, it's different.
So, so the bullet point starting with worker comes off, too.
Yeah, it's just duplicate. It's just Connor Bice.
All right.
Carolyn, I had a question for Heath.
Oh, got a question.
I just, I, I'm, where are we at on Forty-nine? Um, what's the status over there?
All right. Well, uh, County Road Forty-nine is progressing. Um, I think last time we met, the contractor had widened the portion north of, uh, Twenty-four. And on the se-, portion south of, um, Twenty-four, they had performed the widening, I mean, they're not doing a widening there. They had put the G-treatment down, and they had placed, uh, a lane. They've now finished both lanes on the south side of Twenty-four, as well as, um, have finished most of the intersections. Paving out the radius for each of the intersections to churches, to existing roads and what have you. And when they finish that, they'll start back on the, uh, portion north of, uh, Twenty-four and, uh, worth the lanes and then finish up with the intersections. And then, um, after that, uh, they'll have a temporary stripe, wait several weeks for it to cure before they put the permanent stripe. And they also plan on putting the, uh, replacing the, uh, the culvert, the guardrail over the culvert just south of the Clanton City limits.
You got an ETA at all on completion date?
Well, it depends on if it keeps raining like it's been raining. Uh, it's just really weather dependent. And, uh, they have crews on site working full-time just, uh, for the last couple of weeks, just when, when available. They weren't able to work today.
No.
None this week, probably.
Well, there was, uh, just go ahead and stay up here because I was going to ask you for road updates. So if you get, and getting, any roads that we have in progress, process of being upgraded?
Sure.
If you'll just give us updates on them.
Of course, County Road Forty-nine is, is, is being completed by the contractor. And, um, County Road Six Thirty-three, as we mentioned, we've reconstructed it and, um, sealed it. And it's ready for a wearing surface. We also have reconstructed County Road One Seventy, but we've been unable to place the wearing, the chip seal on it. We were hoping to do so last week, but each day. We were hoping to do so last week, but each day it rained. But we plan on putting a double-layer chip seal on County Road, um, one seventy, and that will wrap that project up. Um, we've also mobilized equipment towards County Road ninety-five on the north end of the county, going into Shelby County. Um, has a lot of large, uh, base failures, and so that's a, it's a little over a mile long. And we'll reconstruct it, put a seal on it, and then have a contractor put a wearing surface on it. And then, uh, uh, also close to the shop, seven, seven, I think it was sixty-four, right just past Loves. The city had a contractor, um, place a wearing surface up just past the, uh, the gas station. Um, but we were gonna complete that by just reconstructing it and then having a wearing surface put on it. It'd be a small project. We're still, um, working on the plans for the County Road sixteen, um, guardrail project that we, um, received a, uh, LRSI grant for. Um, let's see here, um. I guess that's for the most part, the roads. Um, oh, uh, well, after that, we'll also, we still have on the list, hopefully, to, uh, reconstruct County Road thirty and possibly put out a, uh, contract project to, uh, to improve the portion of, um, County Road sixteen between County Roads, uh.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, thirty-seven. That's correct. So, we've got plenty of work.
Yep. Alright, thank you, Heath. Any questions? Alright. Alright, commissioners?
I think he was asking the, the commissioners a question.
No, no, it still didn't work though. County Road forty-nine. Oh, yeah. The question was, well, County Road forty-nine, um, the lines are, are faint, and that is because right now they're temporary traffic stripe, and, um, and after the contractor's completed the final wearing surface, it takes about two weeks for the asphalt to really cure, so that the final, the good stripe can be put on, and it'll, it should be a good one. Thank you.
Okay. Alright, Commissioner Billingsley. Commissioner Bone.
I think I can cover bullet point one and two all in, all together. Uh, a couple of days ago, myself and Commissioner Perkins and, uh, our, uh, engineer Heath, we'd sit down and had a discussion about coming together and working together, using the road department to help us do, since we purchased new land up there at Manuka Park, uh, coming together to build the roads and help maintain the roads that's our early, currently up there. And to do so, we needed a skid steer to help build the roads and keep the roads cleared out. And, uh, we come up with a plan and, uh, presented it to Miss Sylvia and McKisha to come up with some money for us, and they've done that as well. So that's one and two bullet points for me, the purchase of a skid steer and budget amendment.
I think the proper term would be they figured out how to fit it in the budget.
They, yeah, they.
They move, they move money around for us.
There you go. Okay.
Move money. Uh, so I'll be asking for a resolution for that tomorrow, or to go in.
Can, I reckon that can go in, uh, consent agenda, can't it?
Well, just so everybody will know, part of this came about from a meeting, a, um, seminar that Commissioner Perkins attended, where he found out that other counties' road departments work in their parks and help them keep trails and roads up. That's where this idea came from, and I think it's gonna work out real good.
Okay.
I think it'll probably work out real good if we got enough help to do it. I don't have a problem with him doing it, but I really don't wanna take nothing away from working on them roads to go to the park.
I don't know, that's more than that.
So, so we, so.
You can, yeah, you can highlight.
Commissioner Heath, yeah, what we did was, we sat down with Heath and, and, uh, Don and myself and Bone, and, uh, and that is an issue, because we don't wanna pull off of a, of a road project. Roads are very important in the county, as everybody, everybody knows. And we don't wanna pull them off a road project and stick them over in a park project. So, working with him and coming up on the new budget year, um, we're, we're gonna visit that as far as having somebody that's actually scheduled. So he's gonna have to, there'll be some probably new hires in the road department, and they'll schedule that particular person for that day or two in the parks department, and then the other three days or four days, or if we don't need them that week, whatever, they're on, on projects themselves. So it's, it's almost an overage in that regards.
So one thing.
Probably be doing is one hire to run that.
To run that particular machine will be one person.
Yeah, that's, that was one thing that was discussed, and I was part of that discussion. You gotta have somebody who knows how to run a skid steer, to run a skid steer, not just.
And we're not gonna have everybody on that skid steer, and it just, you will gonna designate one person on it.
Alright, anything else on those? Okay.
Uh, the new courthouse update, um, Mr., uh, Commissioner Chills can correct me on this if I'm saying it wrong. Um, we should start seeing steel go up in the next couple of days, and we're so far on budget. And April twenty-seventh is supposed to be, we're supposed to get our keys.
Me, mate, oh.
Twenty, twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six.
Wait a minute. You said April?
That's what was told to me.
That's, they said eighteen months from when they started, they'd be done.
Yeah. Well, I was allowed a couple of months to weather it. I had no idea, April. That's great.
As of right now, it's April twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-six, we'll get the keys to the new courthouse.
Weather permitting.
Weather permitting.
The, the VA, the, uh.
Yeah, and I'm gonna be working, um, get the monuments moved as well over there too.
I'll help with that. Um.
I was gonna ask the sheriff to give us a blue light escort over there and shut some streets down, uh, get up with the city of Clanton and all that good stuff.
He gonna charge you for extra service.
I'll give him a heads up right now, that way he can put it in his budget, 'cause it's next year.
Com- Commissioner Bone's got a really good idea. He's, he's being a little coy with it right now, but he's got a good idea about, uh, moving those monuments.
Alright, that's a good update.
Manuka Park update. We, uh, had some people up there like to party and just done some damage to one of the cabins. Uh, I can get Mr. Giles back up here.
Yeah, tell us what happened.
Alright, what I seen, there was probably six, I know six vehicles parked in front of one. This was during the day, there's probably fifteen folks right there around one cabin. I can't say how many spent the night. Supposed to be four max in there at night. So I don't know how many spent the night, but when they left, then we checked the cabin. We got some blinds messed up, mirror busted out, and uh, a little damage to the cabin, so. We, uh, I don't know on Rover Pass, if it shows, says two vehicles per spot. Now, on our campsites, it do, or does. We got two vehicles per campsite. I didn't see where it said that on the cabins, but I'm not sure.
On the website, no, but, uh, uh, McKisha did find where.
Hang on, Mr. Giles.
Yeah, great. Yeah, 'cause, uh, we didn't have, I don't know how this took place, uh, they paid on Rover Pass, but we didn't get a cleaning fee out of it or deposit. I don't know if we can. My suggestion was, I don't know if we can do this, uh, get a card on, on hold, so when they leave, if they get, or when they go to check out, let's inspect it before they leave, if they damaged done.
Yes, sir.
Then be.
Oh, is it? Yeah, I, we've been talking about that this afternoon. This needs to be posted on Rover Pass. So there's no question if anybody comes back and say, you have a right to charge me. Well, it's on Rover Pass. So if they book online, just like if you booked a motel room somewhere, pet policy, everything's on there for you to read. If you don't read it, that's your fault. But you're complying, you're abide, agreeing to abide by it when you, uh, reserve a room, so this will be the same way.
Pretty much got the same group. Both have it reserved this coming weekend, so, but I will be there.
They are supposed to be coming back, or they got it reserved?
I will be there late. I don't know what's going on this weekend.
They also knocked the barn doors off the tracks.
Which they could be put back simple. I mean, that ain't no, we can put them back simple. It ain't no damage, but they had the barn.
So they signed.
Barn doors on the inside, they off the tracks.
So did they sign this? This is due?
That was a draft that was drawn up. They were initially a kids' fairy.
Uh-huh.
And we never.
Implemented this one?
No, we never made it official, because, as you can see, there are questions on there where we were saying, you know, do we need to do this, do whatever? But that was just a draft of the activity that they signed.
So what they signed, so they signed this one?
Well, it was never passed, but I would feel free to recommend that it.
Okay, so we didn't, so they're not bound to it at this point, 'cause it never passed us, or. But, this one did, but that one in the last commission, your, the last one was in place.
Yeah.
But not enforced.
Well, I think that it, that, there are some of those things that may or may not have been left off of the rules that got posted on Rover Pass. So the, the work in progress here, there's, there's several things on our current webpage that are having to be continually updated and worked on, where Rover Pass is, is live. So it may have been left off there. However, there is a clause in there that our park director or park manager that's there on duty can deny somebody staying there. So if, yeah, my suggestion would be, if they're booked to be there, then we talk to them prior, when they, whenever they show up. You know, and, and let them understand that this type of activity is not tolerated.
Well, I think that would give them a bill for the damages and you don't stay.
I would be, yeah, I mean, it needs to run, agreed, it needs to run like a, a hotel. So when we go camp, when we go get a cabin at Lake Point or whatever, our cards don't file.
Absolutely, incidentals.
I got charged, I went fishing and left my truck up in the parking lot and had no space, but, I mean, so, so granted, I think it needs to be handled when they, when they go to check in this next time, and then we'll, we're working on that other, other on Rover Pass to get it completely updated. It's just, yeah, I mean, it's just part of the growing pains of the whole.
Try and get everything set up right now.
It is the same, it is the same person that, that.
Okay, so you can.
Last time it is this time, same person is, is.
Yeah.
Well, they pay half of their stuff, or, and when they check in, they pay the other.
Okay, well, we'll need to get a list of, of the damages and the price it's gonna cost us to replace those.
I'll have it tomorrow.
And, uh, whenever they get there. When, when, they, they're coming back Friday?
Friday, and, uh, depending something less, something comes up, the manager be there, but I'll also be there Friday. I'm gonna be there pretty much all day, and, uh.
What time's check-in Friday?
'Cause if they six vehicles there, they don't need to be six vehicles, 'cause they all over the grass and everywhere else.
No, there's, there's a limit, there's a limit to how many people's supposed to be in there, so we'll.
But it's no different, so I, I feel, and I may speak, because you have these cabins rented out, correct? You, you have them already rented out several through the year. So I feel that we need to go ahead and get something in place, 'cause these incidentals are going to happen. So, um, if we have the consensus of the commission, we got to help us move quick, quickly.
Oh, we've already passed it. We've just, we, it just not, was not made, they were not made aware by being on the Rover Pass website that this was a rule of the commission. It, like I said, it was just an oversight, putting everything on there, uh, it was just missed.
So, so going forward.
This has been passed.
Alright, and so that violation now, they'll take care of it right there.
Right. It just wasn't posted, wasn't posted online.
Yeah.
Okay, and you feel, okay, so, so we're going to prevent this from happening again. What are we doing effective tonight going forward?
We have to update Rover Pass.
We gotta update the webpage.
Okay, so, so.
Well, until, until it's on Rover Pass, you can hand them a copy of this when they check in.
Absolutely.
You can hand them this, but once it's on Rover Pass, there won't be any need to put that in their hand.
Because we've all rented hotels, and I'm sure these people there, we know, incidentals, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, you know, I'm kinda like Perkins. I went to Vegas and took all the stuff out there, a little mini refrigerator, and put my cold, my drinks, 'cause I want the cold. I didn't want the alcohol. Guess what? Phew, they charged me four hundred and something dollars for moving all that stuff out of there.
Expensive.
And you never drank it. Yeah, yes, so, yes, yes. Do not take anything out the refrigerator. It's waited.
Yeah.
Put their card on hold in case they do damage.
It's in there.
When they, when they come to check in, just make them a copy.
Have, have a copy of it. I, I spend a lot of time on the road and, in my, in my career. A lot of times, this type of stuff is, is on the back of the entrance door. And, uh, that way, they see it every time they walk towards that door.
You're not sitting there without your door.
I didn't think about that.
Yep, I'll make some copies and.
I forgot about that. Well, it's online. It'd, it'd go online.
You put it, it's online on, you can put it on, from what I understand, on Rover Pass, we can put it on there for it's, uh, on hold.
For incidentals, a certain amount of incidentals, right, children, you know how we have.
If they minded, if they didn't have a problem, we could put their credit card, their debit card on hold, but we supposed to ask.
There's a button they can click. It asks them, do you wanna say click that button?
Well, we don't, most of us don't do that.
I go to a motel, they don't ask me that.
They just told me they want a copy of my card. They made a copy of my card.
They, they asked us, you know, we can pay them.
Deposit for incidentals.
Alright, they're gonna, they're gonna check with Rover Pass tomorrow and see what we can do.
We all know that.
As far as holding the cards.
Yeah, it's real easy. Can't tow that glitz.
Alright, we know what we're gonna do. You're gonna check Rover Pass tomorrow and see if we can hold. Well, I probably got an email I can go back to, 'cause I get the same thing she gets. I'll, I'll find it. 'Cause I forward them to her. Okay. Alright, we've got that.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Commissioner Chills.
Alright, I'll do this quickly. Uh, public works projects then at the animal shelter are, uh, uh, the major ones are complete. There's still some minor things that we're, we're working on. Uh, I'm happy to announce, though, that, uh, the, Keenland to have spent thus far is eighty-five thousand, is that? Is that correct? Eighty-three, eighty-five thousand? So, uh, we had a hundred and fifty out of the, uh, park funds and with some, uh, ingenuity and some, some help and some great contractors that gave us some fantastic quotes. We were, we were able to do what we needed to do for eighty-three or eighty-five. There's a few more things that we're gonna do, but that's only a few thousand more dollars. So we'll be far under the one hundred thousand dollar, uh, threshold that keep us all out of, uh, orange jumpsuits. And, uh, and then we still have the leftover money that we can use for maintenance and stuff like that. The, uh, uh, Hill Science Diet Program, I would like to talk to you about that. You'll find that in your packet. This is a program of very reputable dog food, uh, animal food company, and, uh, it is a program. Uh, we basically would be, uh, using their, if we agree to the contract, we would basically be using their fo- food exclusively. Uh, we would be able to purchase that food at, uh, more than half, uh, off of the, of the price. We think that that would take the, the annual spend down there, correct me if I'm wrong, Director, is close twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars. This would bring it down to about eight thousand dollars, and it would be, uh, one food being fed to all animals. And so that would be consistent across all, all the animals, and so that helps with, and it's, and it's quality food. That helps with, uh, um, poop, sorry. That helps with a lot of things down there. Helps with the efficiency of the fil- of the shelter. How about that? Of cleaning the shelter, so this, uh, there. Of cleaning the shelter. So, this uh, there's a lot of advantages, uh, uh, the, the discounting price is one thing. There are promotional kits that when the animals are adopted, the, these kits are, are able to be sent home with the adoptive parents. Is that what you call them? Adoptive owners? And um, and, and then, but there's promotional activities that, that, that we can take advantage of. Um, you know, a lot of people still donate dog food to us and some of it's really good quality, some of it's, you know. It's something for the dogs to eat and that, that kinda messes up their GI tract. But, uh, any adopted, or any uh, donated food, we can still send out with, uh, you know, with the. Adoptive parents or the uh, rescues or something like that. So we can still roundhouse that if we needed to. But this would uh, this would help us with our budget. Um, I had pointed out, and you'll see in your packet, I had pointed out some, some benefits that, that jumped out at me. But there was also some questions, so I sent that to our, uh, to Ben, to our, our attorney. And he agreed that there's probably some things that is, that's uh, that needs to be massaged a little bit. He recommends that we move forward with this, with uh, uh, stipulating that, uh, to the approval of the attorney. So I'll be asking for a resolution to uh, uh, for that contract to be accepted and, and signed by our, our chair tomorrow night. There's an opportunity for a ten thousand dollar grant application, different, different deal altogether. Uh, there, this will, is just straight money for uh. A, a program that will help us spay and neuter. Uh, nine thousand dollars of it goes to uh, professional services. There's a thousand dollars when these animals come back from their spay or neuter event. You know, there are different medications that are needed uh, to take care of them, and so a thousand dollars of that grant can be spent. In that way, to help uh, care for these animals. Uh, and then I'll be asking for a approval for that, to accept that, that costs us nothing. That's just, they're wanting to give us money. Would y'all like ten thousand dollars? Yes, would be the answer. So, um. Uh, another thing that I'll be asking for is a resolution to open a two thousand dollar retainer account. With Alabama Animal Alliance in Montgomery. We uh, from time to time, will send a lot of animals, a van load of animals down for spay and neuter. Uh, uh, most of the time, that will not run two thousand dollars, but what happens is that we cannot schedule another load of animals. Until that previous bill is completely paid. Now, it's convenient if we're ru- running down there and it just so happens that we are able to take a check with us. But it's uh, similar to Aldott's Retainer Program. We'll have two thousand dollars banked down there. They can charge the bill against that, and then we can replenish that two thousand dollar retainer. Uh, so this will help the efficiencies, cause we, we have a, when, when boats come in and they fall in love with one of the animals. Then they want the animal, and we can't let them have the animal until they're spay or neuter. So this will help our efficiency and speed that up. So I'll be asking for that, uh, ability to start that two thousand dollar retainer. Also, uh, Chilton County News, uh, there's an invoice, and this is for the reappraisal. And where we have to publish the ad, and we've done that in Chilton County News, so I'll be asking for approval of, of that also.
Alright, anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Hall. Uh, Commissioner Headley.
Yes, I know, I, I, I don't hear the reason, sort of, of a multi-purpose facility. I'd really like for, for me and Mr. Williams maybe to get together and go look at one of them multi-purpose facilities. And try to get the ball rolling on that thing and put money in that budget to get it started.
Alright, well, I'll call Bradley and see if we can go look at that in Blount County shortly. Alright.
No use to just keep waiting. We'll be spending all that money on something else.
I'd like to go with you.
Okay. You can go.
I'd like to go too. I'd like to go, I'd be interested in doing something.
Okay.
Everybody wanna go?
Not, it's not about everybody wants to go, I just want it purposeful.
Who's got a van?
I got, I got.
Sheriff's got one.
And, and, and some nice colored clothes we can wear. I've, I've got an, I've got a uh, a vehicle that'll seat eight, so.
Well, it, it probably really would be better no more than three of us together.
Well, we can go in different cars, and it's informational, so it'd be, we could all go if we wanted to.
Alright, I'll find out, we'll set that up. Anything else?
Yeah, I've got one other thing, and I, and I, it just, sometimes when they call me, they don't, in my, on my mind, I'm working, doing something else. But, uh, you know, the, the city has said something about uh, doing something out here near their stuff at the interstate. At the two twelve exit, and so I really think uh, we might wanna put the, our industrial development board on looking at. Trying to uh, get some motels to come out there on that ten acres of that Ellison property. If that starts building, we need to be ready to do something towards it, and we make a little money. They gonna make a whole lot of money, we'll make a little bit of pie. Slice of pie is better than no pie.
I'd be satisfied to get our money back out of that piece of property.
Oh, I wouldn't wanna sell it, that'd be nonsense. You make a lot more tax off of it if you put your motel there than you can trying to sell it. We done sold too much.
Alright, anything else?
That's it.
Alright, Commissioner Perkins.
Yes, sir. So first thing I got on, uh, I'll be asking for a resolution that we uh, accept the contract with Alabama Logos. It's Interstate Logos Company. Um, is similar to, this is, make sure everybody can hear me. This is basically the advertisement that goes on the blue uh, informational signs on the interstate. When you get out, when you, when you're approaching an exit, it'll have an information sign, and then on the ramp, it'll have another uh, small blue sign. With the direction toward this. This would be for Higgins Ferry Park. We currently maintain one, or we have one for uh, Manuka. On southbound, northbound side, and uh, this would be adding one for Higgins Ferry on northbound, southbound side. So it would be uh, one, one main line on north and south, and then one on the ramp on north and south. Uh, the contract's twenty-six hundred dollars per year, and that's for both sides, so that covers the whole entire, the whole entire thing. Um, I did a little bit of research in, into this, it's basically advertisement. Um, uh, I know it's an information board, but it's, and it's li- it's not like a billboard, but it is an information board. And with, we got so many events that we're now attracting to the area, it will help with directions with that. Um, and plus, it's um, just get good, it's a, a pretty good investment for the number of eyeballs that pass it. When you divide out the number for, for true advertisement uh, potential there. So be asking for a uh, resolution that we accept that contract and have it signed by the chair. Uh, and then the next thing is revised subdivision regulations. I'll be asking for a resolution that we adopt the revised subdivision regulations. Um, after the special work session that we had, uh, we went ahead and modified those. The two changes that we, the changes that we made in the, in, in, from that night, were to change the minimum lot size. Uh, where we had originally said a half, we changed it to a third of an acre, went fifteen thousand square feet. Which would be the minimum health department regulation size. And then, um, we removed the storm shelter requirement from the subdivision regulations. Which would have only, would, would have affected the mobile home park and the RV parks. So, um, after uh, some of the emails you had sent, Ben, to get an opinion from that night. Uh, we followed up on that, and, and uh, Commissioner, Chairman Williams followed up on that. And it was a recommendation that uh, instead of changing the wording around and getting real wordy with it, just to remove it altogether. So we did that. So changed minimum lot size to a third, and then uh, removed the storm shelter requirement from the uh, regulations. All, all the other stuff is, is the same, and I'll be moving for a resolution to adopt that, that revision. And that revision would become effective uh, immediately. So that's what I, that's what I got.
Anybody got any questions?
Uh, yeah, I did, not on the subdivision thing, but you, the, the sign is at the park at the Higgins Ferry. You putting it at two oh eight, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I know you said you had one north and south, and I, but I think the one we got north and south is at Jimmison for the.
Yeah, it's for, well, for Manuka's is at two nineteen, for the, the local, where you get off for to go to that. This would be that information board, it would um, I think it would fall under camping or either, I don't think it would go under, under attraction. One or the other, but it's that big blue sign, but yes, sir, it goes into two oh eight, yeah. Yeah, two oh eight.
Alright, anything else?
Oh, I also need uh, both those items removed from consent. They need to be voted individually. Thank you.
Okay, uh, as most of you know, Memorial Day is coming up on the twenty-sixth. That would be our normal work session night. So, we're gonna have a, our work session is gonna move to May the twenty-second instead. So Roger can be here on the twenty-sixth if he wants to, but the rest of us will be celebrating Memorial Day.
Well, I was gonna ask a question. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Can uh, we typically, you know, do it the night before or whatever, can, for that one, instead of doing it twenty-second, you, you wanna just do the work session? And the meeting on the same night?
Maybe twenty-seventh.
Just do it on the twenty-seventh, this one time?
I'm, I am down with that.
I don't have a problem with that at all. Uh, okay. We'll need a resolution tomorrow night, are we gonna do it at uh, six?
Yeah, yeah, si- six thirty work session and start the meeting.
No, our meeting time has gotta be six thirty. We established that. We'd have to, uh, well, no, we've got enough time. We can change the meeting times for that meeting, so we'd have to change the time, it's gotta be set.
I'd do work session at six thirty and then set the um, meeting at seven thirty.
Uh, just, I'd say immediately after.
Can't do that, can't do that, it's gotta be a definite time.
I just think it's more convenient, that particular time, just to do it that one night.
We just don't have so much to say, and we'll have thirty minutes and then go right into.
I don't have a lot that night. I don't think I got a lot that night.
Okay, um. Someone can put a resolution up tomorrow night, I'll ask for a second. So you make it either s- uh, six thirty and seven, or six thirty and seven thirty. But if you put it at seven o'clock, I'll run through the work session a whole lot faster than I normally have.
Why can't you start doing it now?
It's getting late.
Because somebody can't shut up down there. Okay, uh, this is something we discussed uh, several months ago. Prior to this commission taking its seat. Uh, I don't really think that I want to go the route of basically micromanaging. We've uh, I think we need a, 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 each department have a protocol. If you have a request, that you handle it just like customer service at Chick-fil-A. Chick-fil-A, you don't have to ask, they just automatically know what you're thinking and give it to you. So, uh, all our departments, I would like to see phone calls returned. Just a nice pleasant attitude when you're talking to people on the phone, when they, when they call. I'm serious, because you, nobody knows how bent out of shape this fella here gets. When somebody on the other end, and I'm calling to ask a question, and they're acting like they're putting me. Uh, I'm putting them out to ask a question. So I would like to see, like, our commission office does a very good job of it. Even though when I call, I get a different attitude, but that's expected. Uh, welcoming people when they call. So we need that in every department. So instead of me putting forth a resolution, or asking for a resolution tomorrow night, I'd just like each department to work on this. So we don't have to get into micromanaging. Alright, and that's all I've got.
Hey, I, 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 I've got a little bit of comment on that too. I, I, I think we need to go on and do the offices that we're over. Like, commission office and the road department come on that. And the other offices can work on theirs. And bring them to us.
I agree, that's a good idea.
I mean, they ain't no use of waiting.
It oughta be.
I get a few calls, not many, but a few that says, well, I've called the road department twice. And I didn't get a return call, but I think me and Heath took care of that.
Well, I think you'd be good. I think your suggestion is well taken, it is by me, that each, each liaison work with the department heads. That they're responsible for, and see if we work this thing out, instead of it coming back to us. Good idea. Alright, any other suggestions or comments?
Yeah, since you said that. My, my person down at the park, his phone service sucks. He can't talk to nobody then.
Well.
Well, when, when he, when he leaves, he'll leave within forty-eight hours or sometime, and he can make that call. We ain't gonna hunt no excuse, we gonna hunt him with excuse for him.
Now, I know what he's talking about, the service, but we can't do anything about that. The uh, Manuka Parks, Manuka Park is just like, uh.
Yeah, we can't.
It's Higgins Ferry, when he's down here, it's Higgins Ferry.
Well, this is part of Manuka, you ain't got service.
So, does, eh, does all the departments have a standard operating policy and procedure guide? Does every department, eh, we have, does, I mean, do, I'm gonna pick on Heath, cause he's sitting here. Does road department have an operating policy?
Customer, a customer service.
Or a book, I mean, just something that says.
We've talked about this. We, we take public service seriously, and uh, when we get an email off the website, we reply with an email to let them know that we acknowledge that they received it. And we're gonna make it into a work order. Um, when we get voicemails, we call, right when we get the voicemail, we return the phone call, let the people know that we did receive the voicemail. Um, and maybe even ask a few more questions about what their request or concern was. Um, so we always, uh, it's my knowledge, we work hard on immediately returning all emails and phone calls. Um, now, sometimes what people want is an answer, and we can't give them an answer always, immediately. We have to go investigate sites, and we have to, you know, do some budgeting with the commission, and check on histories and deeds and what have you. And sometimes they want an answer within forty, forty-eight hours, but we, we can't promise, but we do always respond immediately, um, to my knowledge.
I, I mean, I would kinda like to see, like, maybe we get with, like Commissioner Headley was saying. That the liaisons get with all the department heads, and to have the department head write it, write one out. And, and bring it back to the commission and let us see them, and just to prefer their department.
What's your department?
He's got an SOP.
That'd make your job easy, bud.
Well, I can, I can guarantee you the sheriff does his job.
Okay, alright, nothing else this work session?
Sheriff's got a question.
I know about them, yeah. Yeah, I think I had told people it was sent out, it was actually sent out uh, May the eighth. So it'll be June eighth, tenth, somewhere along in there, before we'll have anything back that we can look at.
RFP for what?
Ambulance service.
That's why I just make sure you know.
Oh, thank you, sir. Okay, all minds satisfied, we'll be back tomorrow night at six thirty for our meeting.